Yeah, there was no issue.
I was around too, Larry. It never worked.
They substituted the page.
Yeah.
It wasn't rated for standard.
It's a coordinate. Okay, people. Thirty-six minutes. That's a good goal for tonight, all right? I got a viable path to him to get to. I'm already missing. Thirty-six, I think. No questions.
Hello.
Are you on?
I'm gonna talk to America.
This is Sarah.
Should I start talking Thursday or Friday? Never see that. Never see that.
Yeah, that's what he sent over the message.
He said call the panel next week. One day I want to do this.
Thursday or Friday. Because I'm thinking of Friday. That's awesome. And it's Saturday.
Some people, kids, forget.
Everybody's on.
Okay, we'll call to our Chisholm City Council meeting October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, at five-thirty P.M. Susan, would you please take your call?
Commissioner Halliwell?
Present.
Commissioner Faton?
Here.
Commissioner Vaki?
Here.
Commissioner Lardy?
Present. Present.
Commissioner Halverson?
Present.
Mayor Lay.
Here. The council look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We're going to, um, Devin's gonna take Collins' items, and we're gonna remove item C-four. So with that removal...
So will, I have a question.
Yes.
Will Devin just continue with his as he's doing Collins?
Yes.
So he will be gone too?
He's gonna... No, he'll take Devin's and he'll come back up.
Okay.
All right. Nice with the removal of C-four and Devin taking over for Collins. Look at the motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Pledge allegiance to the...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Halliwell, is there any vote of participation?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go through council reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Halliwell. Good evening.
Good evening. I attended the Central Orange Santerio Sewer District meeting last week, our public utilities meeting, the Minnesota Discovery Center planning meeting, the second of seven, and the Fifth Street assessment hearing this prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Fulton, good evening.
Good evening. I attended a budget meeting and an MDC planning meeting.
Commissioner Vaki, good evening.
Good evening. No report.
Commissioner Varda, good evening.
No formal report.
Commissioner Halverson, good evening.
Evening. I attended the Redhead Committee meeting, Minnesota Discovery Center planning meeting, and the assessment hearing we had at five o'clock today.
Thank you. Apologize for my absent at that meeting. Things just really got away, so. Fire reports, we did have a working session to go over our budget, and just really happy with, you know, our staff and the diligence everyone's been doing, so really looking forward to how we're gonna be able to present that in a couple of months here, so. Moving on, Emma's tractor. Tiffany, good evening.
Good evening. No report.
Fire chief, Jason?
I'll break the mold. Just a quick report to go over our calls. I meant to date we're at a hundred and sixty-eight calls for the year. I'm projecting we're gonna hit over two-hundred AM. On ECFE classes, I believe we attended four of those with the fire department. We're at the Vaughn. Trick or treat, we plan on attending with the ambulance. We're gonna partner up with them on Main Street. Had a meeting last week over at the schools to help with them with their emergency response planning. Over with them, we have a deadline scheduled for next week. I met up with the DNR so they can go back over. Our tender two is actually a DNR surplus, get able that they keep track of in inventory, so I met up with them and they did their annual thing on that. And then the last thing is, I know that our fire report system is going to be changing, and I'm trying to stay in contact with the State Department of Marshal officers to see if we can actually do a class here, how it's gonna work, what they're gonna expect and everything else, so. That's gonna be what went on for us the last couple of months.
Just wanna say also, along with trainings, that thank you to the city, having the fire department for having us over. They got that four-hundred block and...
Four, five, we were leaving on earlier?
Yeah, so they're very, very good training for us.
Two-story downtown building. It was, yeah, good training.
Thank you, Jason. Police chief, Jim, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Just a quick update for our department. We continue to do our PR events throughout the town, including the trick-or-treat on Lake Street event October twenty-ninth, so folks in town, bring your kids, it's a great event, from three to six, okay, three, six, so. Our department continues to do their annual training. Right now, we're scheduling our annual TASER certification with our TASER instructor, our defensive tactics training. We just finished up our annual firearms training as well, so that went really well on Monday with our entire department, so, yeah, we're busy. Call volume is still staying steadily high, so folks out there in the community, I'm sure you've heard, there's Mama Bear and her cub that have been in the area, so we've been addressing that and fielding some calls, but what I would like to say is, do not approach bears. The cub is very cute, but please do not approach it. We are handling it in a way that the DNR has told us to. In the next couple of days, if it's still around and it has been abandoned, then we'll, we'll take the necessary steps to get it out of town with the DNR, so. Another reminder for the public, just calendar parking is enforced all year round. Easiest way to look at calendar parking is to park for the next day, so after six P.M. tonight, which it's the twenty-second today, so you would park for the odd day after six P.M. tonight, so odd side of the street after six P.M. tonight, odd side of the avenue after six P.M. tonight, and then it changes again at six P.M. tomorrow for the even side, so. That not only helps us as far as emergency response, but it also helps our public works crew getting ready for winter, street sweeping, and snow plowing, so just wanted to give a friendly reminder. We do appreciate everybody that chooses to follow the calendar parking ordinance. There has been some confusion over the years, so hopefully that sets some questions or answers some questions, but again, we really appreciate it, so. Any other questions? That's all I have.
You might wanna mention that thirty-first and first rules too.
Yes, yes. So we try to, every year, we get, we get a lot of people that day, but we try to be, we try to be good people because there's two odd days in a row for, for the ones that have thirty-one days, so keep that in mind, but, yeah, so. Thank you, Jim.
Also, I caught Mama Bear on my trail cam the other day, so she's still around.
Okay. Good. She's, she's in the weaning part, so she's letting the cub go out and wander a little bit, and the cub is having a lot of fun, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Really official. Mandy, good evening.
I do have a short report. A public hearing notice has been published and posted for the Planning Commission to vacate the existing plat of Winton addition and approve a preliminary plat of the new Winton addition, and that has been posted and published for November third. The Planning Commission will get agendas on that early next week, and it will be going to the City Council on November twelfth for final approval at your meeting. We will have two, two readings on that, so it will be, you'll be seeing that twice. A quick update on the building permits side of things. To date, we have a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine permits with a total value of ten million, one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one dollars, so things are, things are still, still moving along, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
City engineer, Jim?
I have a report that you had, that you have to answer your questions that you might have, and then what's on the agenda.
Hope it works. Larry?
Just a quick remark, Mayor. We truly appreciate the calendar parking and the PD for helping us out and folks at home too. If I could just add for Jim a little bit, because Susan fielded a call, which is the even side, which is the odd side. Maybe you live in an apartment building and, you know, you don't know. So I like to tell people Thirty West, right? Everyone knows Thirty West. It's an even side, because it's a thirty. Now, it's on the even side on the street and the avenue. As I've said, east and west. Some people don't know where east and west is, truly, so, but they know Thirty West. Everyone knows Thirty West. Thirty West is on the even side of the street and it's on the even side of the avenue, so. There you go. It's on both sides. I hope that didn't confuse you. I was starting with it, so. With that, we're finishing up the lead line project in the water department. We really appreciate that. It's a Minnesota Department of Health mandate, and we're doing really, really well. One of the, the engineering company that represents and helps us is field, you know, helps a lot of cities, and we're like, we're right, we're right, we're at the top of all those, so. We continue to get that done, and so we appreciate all the help on that. And we're building a skating rink down at the Chisholm Community Foundation Park, and we're continuing to go and mix salt sand, put that in the barn for all winter, and we'll start writing the dump trucks with plows after that, and it'll come sooner or later. One morning you'll wake up, there'll be a skim of ice on the lake and probably snow soon after that. I know, I know. Jim's happier. And we worked through the hiring process, and we should have something for you at the next meeting in November, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
City library supervisor? City clerk, treasurer, Devin? City administrator, Stephanie?
I have no report.
Hey, council, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of a list of bills, communications, minutes of previous city council meeting minutes, and payroll and overtime. Just a note that we do need to decrease or remove the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-three dollars from sixty, and sixty-nine cents from the rock-solid amount, so. With that removal, I'd look for a motion and support to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So I'm here ecstatic that we have filled our open police captain's position. So the police commission has hired Joel Erdel as our new, new police captain. Maybe of you, you probably know who he is. He was a former employee of ours for about ten years and then left for a few years, and we're excited to have him back. He brings a wealth of knowledge from the community, and his kids go to school here, and he's from the area, so good asset to our, to our team, so we're really excited. So all that I need from, from the council is just approval of resolution one-zero-two-five-dash-eight-six para declaration for police captain Joel Erdel.
Thank you, chief. Council, I look for a motion and support?
I'll make that motion, please.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion besides welcome back, Joel?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. City engineer, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This afternoon at five o'clock, we did have the assessment hearing on our Fifth Street Southwest project, just south of the school between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue Southwest. So attached on page fifteen, you do have resolution ten-twenty-four-dash-eight-seven, which adopts the assessments for that project. With that, I would be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend adoption of that resolution.
Counsel, unless there's any questions, I'd look for a motion and support for resolution one-zero-two-five-dash-eight-seven.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Jim.
I just got a question.
Chief.
Jim, did anybody attend that?
No.
So, okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
They were all extremely happy, so.
That's wonderful.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Then on page sixteen, we have the resolution ten-twenty-five-dash-eight-eight, which is a cooperative agreement with St. Louis County for its street maintenance. At the last council meeting, you approved the city entering into the cooperative agreements with St. Louis County for their different maintenance programs. As you see on page sixteen, my request for council action, the cracks, items number one and number three, the cracked ceiling and administration inspection and so forth, do total the forty thousand dollars, which is in your proposed budget, and then on item two, you see maintenance striping, and that's what this particular resolution is for, is in the amount of about five hundred dollars, and that's part of Larry's budget. It's not part of the capital improvement budget, so that's why it's forty thousand, five hundred dollars, but this resolution is dealing specifically with the maintenance, excuse me?
Yeah.
No, it's for all of them. I'm sorry. With that, I would recommend approval of resolution ten-twenty-five-dash-eight-eight.
Perfect. Thank you, Jim. Counsel, if there's no questions, I'd look for a motion and support for resolution one-zero-two-five-dash-eight-eight.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
I apologize, Mayor. I'm sorry, Ted. I'm sorry. Go ahead and finish your motion.
I second it.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? Marty?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I, there is an error on the last resolution. I apologize. I missed, numbered it as ten-twenty-four-dash-eight-seven. It should be ten-twenty-five-dash-eight-seven.
I think fifteen.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Susan.
Okay, can you make that correct then?
Excuse me, Mayor. What I meant to do was apologize, because this is a resolution for participation with them in all their maintenance programs. It confused me because earlier this week, we got the actual cooperative agreement for just the striping portion of it, but that'll be on your next council meeting, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And then on page twenty-one, we have a request for the time extension for the ice arena driveway and parking lot improvements, which I spoke to you about at the last council meeting, and you see the accompanying letter requesting that extension from the project manager, Mr. Shane Feltes, with TMT Construction. We did have another status meeting today. Things are going quite well. I think inside the buildings, the curling club is getting pretty well finished up. I think they got some doors to put in, Stephanie, Devin, on that, but otherwise, that's getting pretty well cleaned up. The curing of the floor in the main building is done. They are in the process of putting up the E ceilings and the batter, what are the boards called? Sideboards? Batterboards? I'm not a hockey player.
Dasherboards.
Dasherboards, there you go. Thank you. So, and on the exterior of the building, the concrete work is essentially done. They were putting down the last, the last seven and the Geo grid, and they're looking at probably the paving being done next week along and, and then doing the turf restoration yet this week or next week as well, so they're looking at, per this request, asking that the substantial completion date be extended from October fifteenth to October thirty-first, which is a week from Friday, and then the final completion date will remain for installation of, by June, the swearing course surfaces on the driveways and parking lots being June tenth of next year. For that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend approval of this request for the time extension.
Thank you, Jim. Counsel, I look for a motion and support to approve that extension?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jimmy mentioned unknown utility lines. Once you found them, was there a way to find out what they were? Were they stormwater lines or other types of utilities?
I mean, a little bit more about that. Well, actually, one was a sanitary sewer service going from the curling club building.
Bachi ball.
Bachi ball building.
Oh, okay.
Into the ice arena.
All right.
And then I think there was a fiber cable.
Copper. It was a hundred pair copper cable.
What kind of a copper cable?
One hundred pair copper cable that used to feed the football field, but now they have fiber there, so.
Is that abandoned line then?
It, it, it wasn't, but it is now.
Was, was any of those stormwater lines long? Because I know the mapping up there was not great. I mean, because I know there's catch basins and you look at the maps and you're like, well.
Right, I've been tying into.
They don't, they don't make sense.
Tying into the storm sewer system on that football side down at the base of the hill, there was an east-west storm sewer line that takes in all the catch basins that are around the football field.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they, they're tying into that line with that curb line along the football field paths.
Does that go north then up to Second Street, or does it?
It goes to the east, Marty, and then.
I can walk through that alley, and then it goes to Second Street.
Okay, yeah, because I remember looking at the maps a few years ago, and it was kind of confusing. It wasn't great, wasn't great mapping.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Devin? Brian?
No apologies. He is all, probably taking, calling pay apps here. For the first one, there's pay application one for dollars due to construction over at Redhead Trail there. The pay applications for a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That's on page twenty-three. Also, we just look for your approval to pay that invoice.
That's a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-one-sixty-seven-twenty-five?
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Hey, council, I look for a motion to approve pay application number one of the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Marty. Support. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Is this paid by us, or?
It's a grant.
Okay.
It's a combination of an I triple R and LCC grant.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is pay application two for the dollars, just to get some more work on that first payout. This progress payment is for a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, and the remaining contract worth on there is two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-eleven dollars to, for your approval to pay the eight-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. As I, one other thing I should note, it's Eric Carlson, the manager on this project, has approved of these for your approval. I don't know, that was on set, that's only, we wanted to make sure that he had approval since he's overseeing the project.
Okay. Hey, council, I look for a motion support for pay application number two, the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, seven, C-three, pay application number seven, rock-solid trail construction. This invoice or pay application is for a hundred-and-thirty-seven-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. This is also approved by Eric Carlson, and we just look for your approval for that payment.
Hey, council, I look for a motion support to, for pay application number seven, a rock-solid in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is this for the new bike course that was built up there? I forget what it's called, but...
This is for trails.
Trails, okay.
Also, they for the tracks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Devin.
Yeah, just on my payout, or the one that we struck will be working through with rock-solid to bring that to the next council meeting.
Thank you, sir.
There's also a question of retainage on that as well.
Okay. Library supervisor, Katie, Katie.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Looking at page forty-eight of your packet, I'm looking to request approval of a new job description for an intermittent library assistant position. The rule has essentially been designed to provide some additional coverage and support during our high-volume programming periods, and also during staff absences and other unforeseen circumstances. So the primary goal of the position is really just to reduce some safety concerns that library staff are currently facing, primarily on the busy days and also when working alone for extended periods of time. So we're just looking for the, adding that support to create a safer work environment for staff and patrons when nobody's working alone.
Thank you very much.
And this will be a temporary position, not sixty, sixty chefs in a can under here.
Hey, council, I look for a motion and support for the intermittent library assistant job description.
Make the motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you. Jim? Any further discussion?
Good question, Mr. Mayor. Is this for next year?
Yep, yep, so the position, we're looking to hopefully have them onboard. The goal will be January within fiscal year, and it is part of our current budget.
I have a question too. So is this gonna be like the summer help for Larry? A veteran-type deal?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be every year? Go, I'm asking.
I, if we have success with it, then yes.
Okay.
Anticipating in it to be an annual hire, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Right, thank you. And then following that, on page fifty-one, I'm just looking for approval, after the approval of the job description, just looking for... after the approval of the job description, just looking for approval to proceed with, um, advertising of the position, conducting the interviews, and then hiring the temporary, um, intermittent position at 1850 an hour.
Hey, council, I'd look for a motion to approve, uh, the post and hire, the intermittent library assistant.
Who would be on the hiring team?
Um, that would probably consist of myself, um, one library tech, and a library board member. Council's okay with that?
Yeah.
Unless you have any other recommendations for that?
Nope.
Stephanie, you brought it up here. Yeah, do you want to be a member?
I don't think so.
I look for a motion and support. Do we have that?
I don't think so.
No.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis. Support. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Devon, welcome back.
Thank you.
Uh, budget adjustments, page 52. Um, over the, across the last few months, I have collected, uh, different budget, budget adjustments, basically for library donations and, um, some insurance. So this is just increasing the budget to align, um, or to, they increase the budget for the, uh, departments, for their operating budget for incident insurance, reimbursements, and donations, et cetera. But, uh, these changes net to zero, so it really doesn't affect or isn't approving any additional spending above and beyond.
Thank you, Devon. Any questions? I'd look for a motion and support to, uh, approve the budget adjustments.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Stephanie?
What do you mean? Um, item I have on the agenda is to, um, extend consultant engineer Jim Johnson's contract. He has a two-year contract that we're currently working under that expires the end of this year. We're looking at extending that by two more years. Um, yeah, Jim's done a lot of great work for us, and we'd really like to have him stay on and be able to facilitate a lot of our larger projects. So, thanks, Jim, for the work that you've done.
Very valuable asset. Um, looks like the pay increase is standard with what we have, uh, budgeted and what we're looking at, so I would look for a motion and support.
Motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Hey, council, if there's anything else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, everybody?
You sure?